Five thirty, we'll call this meeting order. At this time, I'll ask Stacy Harris to lead us in a pledge and a prayer. Stacy?
Good list, pray. Most gracious Father, Lord, we just come to you today, Lord, we want to just give you thanks for all that you do for us. Lord, we just give you thanks today for this beautiful sunshine and the beautiful weather that you give us. Lord, we assess that you preside over this meeting tonight, Lord, let each and everything that's done be for the betterment of our community and our town, and, Lord, be to your glory. Lord, just put your hand upon these commissioners, Lord, just give them guidance, special blessings upon each and every one that's here tonight. We ask this in your most holy, precious name. Amen.
Amen. A pledge to lead us through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, where we're on station, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stacy. Open forum, citizens who have signed up, city secretary to speak during the open forums will be limited to three minutes. When speaking, we request that you do so from the podium. There will be no discussion during the open forum.
Uh, the first speaker we have is, uh, Tommy Wimberly. Tommy, if you'd like to come speak.
Look here. Oh. My big thing is, I don't see any reason. I'm probably gonna have to tell you this, that's why I'm here. Why we should not have one.
If you want, if you talk to them, they're the decision makers.
Um, I don't know why in the world we shouldn't have one law enforcement here. We've already turned the city judge over to the county. And, uh, there's, it makes sense. We got the county commissioners that are drawing real good salaries. We got city commissioners who are not making anything. It makes more sense to me to put the burden on people that's making all the money and let them do something that's law enforcement. Right now, our ordinances in, in Breckenridge is not being taken care of. And if you don't believe it, you come out there, come to my office and drive out of my office and y'all won't get run over because they're running forty-five, fifty mile an hour coming over that hill. I just followed the car when I come out of McDonald's, just see how fast she is going, she's going seventy-five miles an hour. Okay, who's responsible for building it? Is it, is it the counties or the cities? So we've got, uh, we have all these ordinances that not being enforced. Noise ordinances, they got loud buffers, they get burdle and everything right down the street. From my house up there on top of the hill, I hear them every night right there, right down below the hill on the highway in there. They don't have buffers on them, or they got cutouts or something, they just make all kinds of noise. And they're not even sensitive. I've got a friend, a couple of friends, they moved here, he moved here, um, from out of state.
Tommy, time's up, time's up.
Okay, I'm not here through, that's all right.
About what?
I'll come down, I'll come down and get you one-on-one. Doesn't bother me.
Okay, the next speaker we have is Kevin King.
Well, I'll have to listen to a few things, but, uh, just I'll take my time, uh, about three minutes. I came the last time to discuss it with you. I think I was probably fortunate that Blake and Bob were here because Mr. Mercer's already expressed his opinion that it didn't need to be discussed, and I think, Vince, you and Rob are not willing to support it, from what I understand, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I feel like it's incumbent upon you as commissioners, as representatives of the taxpayers in this county, to strive to, find any way we can save money. When you look at the tax base from two thousand to today, tax base was supported back in two thousand by oil income. If you've gotten your tax statements recently, I think you understand that that, burden has completely shifted on to the taxpayers and this property owners in this county. You as spenders of our money, our taxpayer money, to not fully address, this idea, I think is a, it's wrong, I think. Uh, I was hoping that we would be able to come in here and hear a, what's been done. You know, last time we were here, Blake charged Ms. North with getting some information together. I was hoping to take my three minutes and, talk about what has been done up to this point. For me to just to walk in here and give my three cents worth, which is probably what it's worth, uh, without knowing, you know, what's been done, have you talked to Garza County, did they save any money, uh, you know? You should have presented what facts that you had, before you allow people to come in here and talk, because this is the same thing I addressed with you the last time. And for the county to bring you something is, what I feel like is is so important to discuss, and then it be discussed under the veil of a, closed executive session. If I hadn't have come to talk and get Blake to put it on the, uh, agenda, there wouldn't have been anything done about this. So, you know, I still don't know any more than I did when I came here the last time, because I would have assumed, y'all would have told us what you found out, and then we could have spent our three minutes talking. So, uh, that's kind of ridiculous, well, I think.
And the next speaker is Will Holt.
Um, I echo what Kevin said, and I think it would be more beneficial if we heard what y'all had learned and discussed, and the advantages and disadvantages of it. The chatter that I get, people are coming up to me and asking me what I think and what should happen. I see a lot of people digging in their hills on both sides, um, saying that it's right or it's wrong to go one way or the other, and so, I'm here to tell you that there's no inherently right or wrong avenue to go. It's not, um, it's not wrong to consolidate. And if you stand up here and say that it's wrong, then you need to give moral reasons why it would be wrong. Um, so I don't think if anybody stands up here and says that it's wrong, that that needs to be done. On the flip side, there's nothing wrong with moving forward with a police department, that, as long as this is done correctly. Um, if, if the decision is to move forward with the police department, then I would recommend that a long-term interim be brought in. Uh, this is a very common thing that's done all over the nation, where an interim will come in for a year to a year and a half, and you have to pay them handsomely, and they are there to involve themselves in a sprint, to right the ship, whatever those are at, whatever those issues are, to modernize the agency, get the policies up to speed, to get the recruiting up to where it needs to be, and in the process of that, the interim usually ticks off a lot of people. And that's why they stay for a year or a year and a half, and then during that time, y'all would be looking for the right fit to potentially stay for five, ten years, whatever a normal chief's, chief comes in for. So if you're gonna go the PD route, then bring in an interim chief that is called a fixing chief, and they exist. They're, you hire from the same hiring agency that you have the current one. They need to, they need to be here to modernize, recruit, get the force back up to speed, run off the laziness that exists, and I'm not saying everybody that there is lazy, but there's some folks that don't, don't do much. That's what needs to happen if you go the PD route. If you go the SO route, great, it's not wrong, we're in good hands, okay? I don't know that the cost savings will be tremendous, I've looked at the numbers before. You'll have a minimal to moderate amount of cost savings. But, um, what you really have if you consolidate is you'll have one leader, beholden to the public, to the voters, and that leader can disseminate intelligence, criminal intelligence and information through one chain of command, and there'll be less infighting than likely historically have in small communities. Freckles is no exception. Small towns, rural counties will have a lot of infighting where information and intelligence is not shared, because one side is afraid they're, they're not gonna get the glory if they share information with another. So, um, hold the time.
You're right up, right there.
Excellent.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Will.
All right, we'll go to the action items. Any discussion or intended items will be limited to the city commission, city staff, guests invited to provide input on city issues, and those recognized by the mayor, speak only. Anyone recognized to speak is requested to do so, from the podium. At this time, I'm returning it over to our city manager, Cynthia North.
You want to read the discussion, the action item out, the act, if you want to read the action item.
I'm sorry, Evan.
We need to read the action item.
I'm sorry, I, all right. This is number one, discussion in this area actually regarding combining city and county law enforcement services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, um, and everybody that's come tonight. Um, Mayor Commissioners did direct me to investigate this information and, and really research the issue. Uh, I did meet with, um, county judge, I met with county sheriff, and, um, have done other research as well, and, and talking to different folks. Um, and I have also consulted with our attorney, um, just to make sure that all i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Um, so combining, if you want to go to the, um, so combining the law enforcement services has been discussed. Um, combining the law enforcement services has been discussed apparently in the community for several years. Um, and then with the recent resignation of our, um, police chief here in the city of Breckenridge, the topic did come up again. So, um, as I said, I have done some high-level research and looked at the numbers. Um, there are two options to look at. Um, one would be a legislative option, and that would require legislation. Um, and then the other one would be strengthening, um, the existing interlocal, that we already have in interlocal. I'm not sure if you have the, you know, um, so, um, while several cities across the nation have combined city and county law enforcement services and other, um, common city, uh, county, uh, services that are provided to the public, um, we looked at an example that was comparable in size and similar to the city of Breckenridge, and that would be, um, the county of Garza and the city of Post. So there, you know, it's one city within the county, and they have a little bit less population than we do, um, but it's comparable. So we did look at that. That interlocal right now, um, the key elements of their interlocal is where the county does provide the law enforcement, um, and that's patrol, traffic enforcement, crime watch programs, um, crime investigations, dispatch, uh, special event, law enforcement. Um, the employees are under the command of the sheriff, and the city potentially pays, um, for half, and the county pays for half of the, um, patrol and dispatch budget, um, as its sole cost for the county's provision of law enforcement services. So there's also been some comments raised about whether or not our charter and our ordinances require, um, uh, us to have a police department, therefore a police chief, and it does not. Um, city charter three twenty-six states that the city commission shall have the power to establish a police department. And if they do, then, you know, to, um, appoint a police chief. Um, state law does not require home city, home rural city, which is what Breckenridge is, um, to have a police department. Local government code section three forty-one point zero zero three states that home rural city may provide for a police department. So, um, however, uh, if this were a path that the city wanted to go down, uh, we do have a section in, um, chapter one, article two of our ordinances, um, section one twenty-one, um, that does create, um, you took action to create a police department and the office of a police chief. So that would have to be, um, repealed, which is, would be an easy thing to do if that's what you so choose to do. So the current interlocal, and as has been expressed, um, in the previous meeting and even referenced here tonight, we do have, um, interlocals with the county for several things. Um, with our PD, with dispatch, with fire, uh, with our municipal court judge, um, so it, it can work and it has been done. Our current interlocal for law enforcement right now is primarily the law enforcement center. And so the county owns the law enforcement center, they pay for maintenance, primary upkeep and repair of, um, and provide a space within that center. The county is responsible for the jail operations, staffing, and they will house, uh, persons arrested by, um, VPD, uh, with limits defined by that agreement. And then the county is also responsible for its own employee cell phones, telephone and internet expenses. And then our responsibilities under that current interlocal, and these are just the key points, we are responsible to pay all expenses for the law enforcement center. That's electricity, gas, water, uh, sewer, trash, and the land telephone service. We're also responsible for our own employee's cell phone expenses and internet expenses. Um, the city will pay for law enforcement center, water, sewer, um, and ordinary expenses for the upkeep of the space that they occupy within the law enforcement center. Um, and then the city will follow Stevens County Sheriff's rules for operation for the law enforcement center and the jail facility. Uh, and then finally, the city will be responsible for any city prisoners. The booking procedure, bailers, medical is defined by the agreement, and she'll have eight beds provided to them or available for usage. If the space is available, any prisoner over that eight, the city will pay, um, thirty-five dollars a day for each of those city prisoners. The other agreement that we have that pertains to law enforcement is dispatch services. So the city operates, um, dispatch, and we're responsible for six employees, and our cost, our current cost for those employees, not including benefits, is about two hundred thousand, it's two hundred thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight. Um, the county pays the cities thirty-six thousand annually, and the county pays for the equipment. So, most recently, um, the county, I believe it was three to four years ago, Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, and, um, they got a grant, and that grant was a million to a million point three, um, for that equipment, and the county, so was the county's equipment, and they got. Um, this next page looks at, uh, a cost analysis, and let me just kind of explain the outline of this chart. You can see I took some of those things from the budget. You know, we categorized the budget differently, so it's not, you know, pennies to pennies, so to speak, but I tried to take the items that would be the most impact, um, and look at those. Um, and I compared, you see that first column with the city, that's what the city currently budgets. Um, the second column is what the county budgets, and then the combined, and all I did was just add up those two columns, and then on the proposed, um, you'll see how I came up with those figures, and then what the differences are. And the bottom line is, I think in the first year, you're gonna see a savings of about seventy thousand dollars in the out years. That could be anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand dollars, um, savings, um, going forward. Um, and so now let me get into the meat of that, um, this, stay on that one. Um, you'll see the caveats, these are budgeted positions, not what's actually there. Um, this includes all positions, so it's command, patrol, dispatch and admin. Um, it does not include benefits, um, social security, retirement, certification pay, all of those things. Um, benefits normally, I mean, it's gonna add thirty percent, but the benefits are gonna be, um, and you'll see there's gonna be a difference with retirement and certification pay, for example, but, um, you know, I just took that out, and we're just looking at salaries, and, um, so I just wanted to make that clear. So currently, the city, um, budgets seven hundred and sixty, and I'm gonna round these figures, uh, for salaries. We have eleven positions, uh, we have ten patrol, one chief, and six dispatch. And, um, and then the county, um, what they budget for is four hundred and eighteen thousand. And they have, um, is it seven plus the sheriff, or six plus the sheriff?
Six plus.
Six plus the sheriff, um, and then one admin. Okay, um, and then you'll see what that combined is, that one point one seven nine million. Um, so the proposed, and I'm gonna come back and spend more time on that on the next slide, and what that difference is. So there is a savings of about eighty-one thousand. And I'll come back and delve into that in more detail. Uh, on the vehicles, uh, this would be, just remember, in an interlocal, we can, you know, accommodate some variables in that interlocal. So I'm kind of talking high level, we can accommodate variables. One of the variables would be, and this is a big one, is we are currently in contract with Enterprise for our, um, fleet maintenance program. And it's comprehensive, citywide program. Um, so what you see here is just an approximation for police vehicles only. So, um, remember, this is, um, the whole program is predicated that we're going to replace vehicles every five years, and that cuts down on the maintenance costs, and it cuts down on fuel consumption, um, as we get more fuel-efficient cars. So an annual, uh, cost approximately is a hundred and sixteen, a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year. So after five years, that, um, that is five hundred and eighty-five thousand. So, so for example, let's say we, we combine, and the cost for all of this is two million, the county pays half of that, and the city pays half of that, that's one million. Then in that interlocal, what we could say is we would get credit for that annual cost. We would maintain the assets of those vehicles, and we would take on, you know, maintain that liability as well. And so we would take off that hundred and twenty from that million, um, that we would contribute to the interlocal, for example. That would be one way to handle it. So you come down here, vehicle maintenance and repair, you look at what the city spends and what the county spends, and combine, and really, you're not gonna get that much savings on, on that end of it, is you're still gonna have those vehicles, they're gonna be the same vehicles that we have with Enterprise. Um, so you're not really gonna see an amount of savings. Cleaning and office supplies, um, combining that, I don't think you're gonna see a significant savings there. Um, fuel, again, we're gonna be still driving and rolling, so I don't think you're gonna see a significant savings there. Uniforms and ammo, uh, initially, you will see an upfront cost for, to be outfitted in, um, SO, uh, uniforms, and that for the first year is about, um, eleven thousand dollars. Um, you can see that the city currently, uh, budgets about ten thousand, accounting three, so combined is thirteen seven. Um, proposed is twenty-five, and that is based on, um, bringing over those, uh, patrol officers and outfitting them, and how much per officer that would cost. Uh, and then what's so subtracting that from what we've already budgeted, and you're left with eleven thousand extra that we'd have to spend. So that's where I got the seventy thousand. Um, on those contractual services for us, this is primarily software subscriptions, so this is T-LATs, I believe, um, ticket writing, um, and, uh, for the sheriff, and I have talked with sheriff and the judge about this, and I did get those finalized figures. But I think there probably would be some economies of scale, because they use, for example, COPSync, um, and with COPSync comes, um, the, um, the subscription for T-LATs and the access to that. And so I think you would see some economies of scale. So if you say, I mean, anywhere from five to ten thousand, um, savings there, that would be a good estimate. Does anybody have any questions on those before I move on as I go? Okay. Um, so this is coming back to that salary line item on the proposed, um, and this is how we came up for, with it, and this is from the sheriff. So, uh, and this does include, they currently receive, um, funding from Senate Bill twenty-two, I put two, it's actually twenty-two. Um, and, um, so this is, the figures you see here are including what they get from the state. Now, state might not have that next year, so you don't know, um, but right now, this is what it does include. So the sheriff's at seventy-five, the chief deputy is at fifty-two, and all the patrol officers are, are at twenty-three. Um, so that would be, um, you know, you onboard our patrol officers, uh, with theirs, and that would be, you take ten over, and so there are six, that's twenty-three an hour, forty-seven, eight, forty annually, so that totals seventy-sixty-nine. Um, dispatch, you pay four of those, and they're at sixteen fifty an hour, um, which, let me just say for comparison purposes, on the patrol right now, our patrol is getting twenty-three dollars and twelve cents an hour, and they just got that, remember? We, you guys have worked hard to bring up pay. Um, and so it's a twenty-three twelve, I know it's only twelve cents difference, but, um, on dispatch, um, I mean, we've got a dispatch supervisor that makes more than sixteen fifty an hour, and we've got, um, dispatch that is less. Um, I believe they're fifteen, or sixty-five, something like that. Um, anyway, but you would have, or dispatch at sixteen fifty an hour, it's thirty-four, three twenty annually, you've got that one, thirty-seven, two eighty, and then two admin at sixteen fifty an hour, and that's, uh, again, uh, thirty-four, three twenty annually, and sixty-eight, six forty. Um, and that's how we came up to the figure of one point zero nine eight million on the prior page.
So, if we were, if the police department was full staff, we'd have one chief, ten patrol officers, and then how many dispatch, and how many admin positions?
No. Say that again.
If, currently, if this, if this.
We have one chief, we have ten patrol, and we have six dispatch.
Six dispatch, no admin?
Well, one of those is, you know, a records, uh, and secretary, which is also part.
And the sheriff's department would be one sheriff, six patrol.
Six, oh, what they have currently?
If they were full staff, yes.
Yes.
Six, and then.
Can I ask a question?
Well, that. That, I mean, that's up to the chair.
What do you got, Kevin?
The whole idea of making the combination is a reduction in that sixteen number.
Of the what?
Your patrol.
PD, PD's got ten, the sheriff's got six, the whole idea of combining them is, can we do it with thirteen? And, uh, say more, man. That's, I mean, you comparing it exactly to budgeted positions, but the whole idea is maybe trying to.
Yeah, let me answer the question. This is, um, from the sheriff, and what he would take, what he needs to get the minimum coverage. So we, we're gonna get to that part, but, um, you know, one of the benefits is that we, he would have two, um, on patrol inside the city limits and outside the city limits twenty-four seven. So that, this is the number, the minimum number he needs to have that coverage level of service.
Good. I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Because the thought was, we can do it for less number of employees.
Right. Well, and I'll.
Cut him to, okay. Good enough.
I can't, go ahead.
Did you have another question?
Uh, no, that's good, it's cutting to employees, essentially.
Well.
Well, the, the total number of law enforcement now, if we went to sixteen, it would be cut.
What you are doing, where some of that savings is, you're saving on the chief salary, and you're saving on the command staff. So we've got a captain and we've got two sergeants, they would go on those patrol. So they're making fifty-five, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-eight. So they would go down to forty-seven, almost forty. Um, so the next slide, what I did was I just compared the benefits and, um, I did get some information and I've updated it on this chart, but, so the city's retirement is through, um, T M R X, that's Texas Municipal Retirement System. And the county's is through T C D R S. And, um, to be vested in the city, you have to work five years, and then we match, um, that investment one point five to one. And at the county, they match, they, you have to be vested for eight years, and they match, uh, they do twenty, twenty, twelve percent of the gross salary per year is what they contribute to that retirement program. So it's what, what I was thinking was that they would lose all those years vested, but that's not the case, they will lose. So say somebody works at the city for five years, and they're, they go and they're now a county employee. They would have to serve three more years to be vested. So if they wanted to quit in two years, then they would have essentially lost two years of vesting and investment with the city, having made that change. Now, if somebody has eight years in with the city, then that time does transfer over to T C D R S and meets their vesting requirements. And so they will automatically start then with, with the vesting on the time. So it's just an increase, they've gotta serve, uh, eight years instead of five. Um, on the paid vacation, you can see there, I mean, it's not much, but you know, every little, every little bit helps. Um, you know, for us, paid vacation, one to four years is two weeks, five to nine is three weeks, ten to nineteen is four weeks, and twenty plus, excuse me, is five weeks a year. For the county, one to, um, five years is thirteen days, and then six to, which is a little over two weeks, but six to ten years is eighteen days, which is three, um, about, almost three. Um, so there's a little bit of reduced benefit there. Um, paid sick, we accrued ten hours per month, uh, which is a hundred and twenty per year, and the county accrues six point six per month, which is eighty per year, so that's a reduced benefit. Longevity pay is pretty comparable, um, and then we do have certification pay and the county does not. Um, and just as a reminder, I mean, you guys created certification pay policy a couple, uh, years ago, but we were just able to fund it this, you know, last year. And so, um, the employees are now receiving that benefit. Now, we, we are taking a phased in approach to that, um, and we hope to keep making progress on that. So in short, and these are high level, but the pros would be increased service coverage, so two officers per shift, um, versus the one to one and a half that we have currently. Now, um, and that's what we've averaged over the last several years, and I did put in another slide, um, I don't know if I just, guess I didn't even get that. Okay, um, I'll come back to that, but, um, consistent law enforcement, I think somebody else mentioned that. I mean, you know, having a consistent application of law enforcement, you know, throughout the city and the county, um, in, you know, a reduction in crime with that increased coverage or reduction in crime. Um, and then, just going back to, on the increased service coverage, if we were full staff, um, if you remember.
That was gonna be my deal was, was that, is that based on, the one to one and a half is based on what we have now?
Well, it's based on actual employees, so it's not what's budgeted. And if you remember, and I, I updated it, but you might want to enter, but, um, if, if you remember that graph I created, we haven't been fully staffed in PD, um, since twenty sixteen, except for one year. So every year, we've had salary attrition.
Well, a lot of that was based on because of the pay direction.
Right, well, I think so.
Right, so, so if we, if we do have, uh, an increased staff, that one to one and a half average goes up, right? Is that, I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm.
We should have.
Could be, could, okay, just making sure, I was just kinda taking some notes.
That's just a reminder for you guys of what that, you, you have seen that before, but what that attrition is. And you can see there's one year in there where we were full staff. Um.
I was just, like I said, I wanna make sure just my, my notes here. And this is two officers in the city limits and two in the county at all times?
Right, that's what the sheriff.
Mayor, the next question.
Real quick.
Yes, sir. Like, this state, Rob, you said that it was because of wages, that we believe it could be because of wages. But we need to address, it's also could be because of leadership. Uh, and, and we don't have to address that right now, but I, I wanna put that out there that we had, you know, some inconsistent leadership, not just on our, our city level, but just in our chief too. There's a, there's a challenge there, we need to look at both, if we're looking at numbers, when you look at both, morale of the people and pay. I agree, our pay was too low, I agree a hundred percent with that, but we had some other factors in there that just need to be put out there as we said. Mike.
Um, okay, so the pros and then the cons, um, would be, uh, reduced salaries. And for the patrol officers, it's only twelve cents an hour, I get that, but again, we're hard to get them up there, and also the certification pay. Uh, now for our command staff, it'd be, you know, a much bigger hit. Um, they would, the loss of seniority. Um, and I understand, you know, uh, maybe this could be ameliorated in the interlocal, and you know, we can negotiate on this, but, um, you know, I do understand what the sheriff is saying too. If, you know, we, he's bringing people over, and he's had all of these employees that have been there for years, um, and people coming in over them, I mean, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, so I can understand that. Um, and then, um, increased vesting time, so they're not losing it, um, but they do, instead of the five years, they've gotta get eight years in service time to be vested. And again, that's a high level of looking at the budget, um, looking at the information. Um, you know, some of the other things are more political for you guys to determine. And I, I do think that some of these could be addressed via the interlocal and making one of the, do wanna make the statement, one of the things, um, in the, um, interlocal for the, uh, Garza County, for instance, I mean, there's a sixty day out clause, um, so either party can cancel the interlocal, um, with a sixty day written notice. You could also put in the interlocal that it's reviewed every, you know, after every election. Um, now granted, that's a lot of turning the sailing ship, you know, like this, um, conceivably could be, um, but it does provide that option to look at that issue, uh, tied to an election. And remember, if you are, if you are, I mean, our budget for PD right now is around one point three total. Um, so just using the hypothetical scenario I use, let's say, you know, we create, there was a budget created, it's two million, we pay fifty percent, they pay fifty percent, we did one, two, and three, four years. Um, then conceivably, I mean, we still have the money, it's not like we don't have the funding to support each department. Um, and conceivably, they wouldn't be able to support the number of employees, so they'd have to get rid of some employees and they would, you know, come back to the, the, you know, city police department. And that's all the information I have.
Mr. Kevin. Commissioners, questions to the city manager? Alts?
Uh, I had one, um, and I'd like Kevin to touch on it. Um, Will, Will mentioned it about, I never even thought about it, about like the, uh, kinda conflicts that the police and sheriff would have with intel or information, or wanting to be the first one that knows something. Can you like shed some light on, on how much that does affect current investigations or anything?
Yeah, I don't think I just tell you what.
Well, whoever, if, who was ever gonna speak, if you guys could come up to the podium.
I mean, Steve, you can answer it too, that's fine.
Yeah, you and the sheriff, you need to share, sorry. Tell the secrets of it.
Would you like to have a class now?
That's, that's really a difficult question, I don't, I don't know. I understand this format, there, there is some, uh, information with hail at times, but there's a whole lot more that goes into it. It's not a, uh, who can get a feather in their hat, so to speak. It may be, uh, who's gonna spill the water, so to speak.
Yes, sir. I'm sure, yeah, that's fair, I just thought it was an interesting point.
Yes.
Pick and drop. Go ahead.
Um, I just, uh, I've got just a few that I've kinda thought about. Um, yes, I know, uh, Garza County, uh, opposed to all that area as far as like numbers or whatever, but I'm thinking about like, uh, like our lake community is kinda a community in itself. You know, I don't wanna sacrifice coverage for them. The fleet maintenance, I thought, was thinking about that as well. Uh, the salaries, um, that's kind of my deal is because we were, we, we've been working on this for a number of years to get our police department up to, up to par, uh, to be able to, to get the current ones that we have here to where they have a living wage, where their families could stay here, and they could, uh, uh, possibly retire with our department, uh, getting their, their retirement set up. Um, so I'm, 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 I'm really entrenched in, invested in, in what we have here already. Uh, it's not that the, a question of leadership, let's just get that out of there, cause Kevin's, been knowing him all my life, there's no doubt that he could lead us. I mean, that's, that's, you know, that's not, I, that is not a, a concern of mine, cause I know that he's got the integrity and, and, and the will to, to lead us. Uh, so it's, it's nothing that gets to him, so let's, I don't know what Kevin heard out there about me, I haven't talked to him or anything like that. Uh, but, uh, the thing is, is that I, I think our community and our city is moving forward. Our law enforcement that we have with the city and with the county are, are more cohesive now than we've had in the years that I've been here in, in that community. And I think we need to build off of that. I think we would, it would erase everything that we've, like, every, every vision, uh, uh, every plan that we have for the, the community moving forward, I think that would just all be, be erased. I think the, the, the deal that we have with the chief as far as the, the, the hiring process, uh, I think Cynthia would do, would do great, she had talked about involving the community in that aspect of it. So, you know, it's, it's the thing about it is that, uh, I'm thinking vision down the years, because I think that's why Broken Ridge is kinda in the position that we're in now, because in the eighties, there wasn't much vision for twenty twenty-four. Well, we're in twenty twenty-four, so I wanna have vision for twenty forty-eight. Uh, what are we gonna do twenty years from now? Uh, at some point, we do this, Kevin leads us, we go into the, to, to what we need to, and then he's gonna step aside at some point. Then what are we gonna do if we get an official in there? That is the polar opposite of what we built. So I just have the, a lot of fear of the unknown, uh. I do have a vision that we will, that we will be fully staffed, uh, because we've worked hard on those salaries, we've worked hard on, on, on trying to recruit to get people here. You know, I, I, I wake up every day and I have a deal that I say, um, how do you eat an elephant? Eat it one bite at a time. But if you sit there and you try to eat it all, at one time, you're gonna get full and then you're gonna have a whole lot left over. And I just think that we need to, uh, and I'm, I'm, I was glad to hear what Will had to say, that there was no right or no wrong. Because, you know, in, in this instance, you have some people that, by gosh, you gotta get on one side of the fence and you gotta stay there. Uh, so I appreciate that, that saying that, uh, you know, that there's no right or wrong, it's just, we just gotta make sure that we're efficient in both departments. I think we're headed in that direction, uh, and, and I just think that we could, we can make this better, uh, uh, and, and continue to move forward. Regardless of how, how it goes, I'll be supportive either way, because my heart is for Broken Ridge, my heart is for Stevens County. Uh, so, so regardless of how we move forward, I'll be supportive of, of my colleagues and of our law enforcement community, regardless of what happens.
Yep. Uh, I'm gonna stand up a minute, I'm tired of sitting, and I'm used to talking standing up when I'm out there with y'all in years past. One thing that has not been brought up at all, and I kinda understand it, now Kevin being in law enforcement, Will being there himself, us, us three, there might have been maybe some others I don't know about. I've been doing it for fifty-two years, where were you all fifty-two years ago? Outside of Tommy and I, Rusty and probably wasn't even born, but that's how long I've been in law enforcement. And one thing that has not been brought up all the years, we used to have meetings over at the camp about this, twenty, twenty-five years ago or more, none of y'all were even around, but Stacey was, but he was out here with the city, doing a heck of a good job. One thing that has never been brought up about officers, county, city, state, safety, training, learning. And I think nothing against, uh, Malcolm and Mason when he was here, nothing against any of them, but, but I've worked with these guys, there's a couple of them that are still here, been here for a lot of years, like I had. You're part of my here and I, I had a, a deal done to it yesterday, so you'd have to just put up with it, what they're working on it. Uh, you can't stress enough, if, if this was to go to one, that doubles everything the sheriff has to do. They got that many more men, it's gonna, they need training, those guys, uh, they get training, but, but the city, the police department has lost back. They're, we're not up to the, to the speed we need to be. Yeah, the guys learn, I've worked with them, I wouldn't trade for a, a one of them. Uh, they've helped me more times than I can even begin to tell y'all. By backing me up at night, and I've tried to back them up at night over the years, cause that's what it's all about. But we have got to bring this whole department up past the twentieth century, which stayed too far behind for too long, of course, the big thing is the pay, and that is coming up. You know, I used to come down here to these meetings years ago when they were gonna, uh, budget. I used to come in here, I'd be by myself sitting over there, and they were talking about what they need to do. Never once was any, everything mentioned about a salary increase for the officers, uh, training for the officers. We've got to get somebody in here with a totally new outlook, wholly new. And that, that doesn't take six months, that doesn't take a year, that, that takes a lot of time and patience, and, uh, it just takes a lot of wanting to. Like I said, uh, these guys have been great helping me over the years, I don't know what I would have done without them. I've ended up in some tough spots out here by myself at night, and it sure was nice to see them show up. I'm thankful we have an interim, he's got some good ideas, you know, to kinda start bringing things up. But it, it will take time, it's not gonna happen over, overnight, but that's the one thing. I used to go to the meetings over the county when they were talking about this in the city. There wasn't nothing about, well, we'll do this for the officers, you can't do this and that. The deal is, the city and the county, now nobody's around. The deal is the city and the county, now nobody's around. If you want to go talk to them, go to the cemetery. That's where they all are now. That's how far back from them, just butt heads, butt heads. Could not get one person to agree to do anything. Things have changed. We've got people in, in here that look at it totally different and I'm thankful for that. But again, I just bring the point up. We've got to have somebody in here that can look over the mountaintop, I guess you might say. There's got to be changes. And they're going to take time and, you know, and you want them to take time. And I know these guys have gone to training. I know they've done this, that and, and the other. But they're still so far behind on areas that just need, and you have to have somebody, uh, no, no disrespect toward any of the past chiefs. That's just the way that it's turned out to be. And I want what's best for these guys. And like I said, tonight, tonight, safety was never mentioned, nothing was mentioned about this and that, and it was never mentioned before. You could, the, the city and the county couldn't spend ten minutes together without going to blows about something. About this, you know? And it, and all of a sudden it was gone. There were meetings for years and years. You didn't, you didn't dare bring it up over to the courthouse, anybody. That was fighting words back then. And I'm talking about twenty, twenty-five years ago, maybe more. All the commissioners, both city and county, they're all long gone. There, there might be a few that are still with us, I hope so. But the majority have passed on like we all will at some point. But I just wanted to bring that out. Never once was it mentioned here, never once has it been mentioned in the past about what's the good for the officers and the county. And I thank Kevin and his men, they've helped me over the years. The chief we've, we've had and gotten now, those other guys has helped me. And, uh, I'm going to go on a few more years, but don't get too tired doing it. I, I'd like to go till I'm eighty, I'm seventy-five. I'd like to say when I left law enforcement, I had fifty-seven, fifty-eight years in, but we'll see. Thank you. Thank all y'all. Kevin, yes, sir.
Rob, you made my point for me from the standpoint of being able to communicate back between the city and the county. That's not been, uh, done before to a great extent. We've made improvements with interlocals, this, that and the other. Rob, do you, the sheriff's office handles the county out at the lake.
Yeah, I know, I know that. I just, I was just saying, I just didn't want any reduction of.
And I'm not, I'm not.
It was just, it's the question.
I'm not advocating for a reduction in pay for those guys. There's could be more work done on the retirement and working with those two entities to see what could happen. I think there's more work could have been done with it, or can be done with it if you decide you want to move forward with it. But I think the big thing is, is people that have a negative view on combining these two forces of thinking that it's, people are going to look at it like Breck Ridge is demising, going downhill, we're combining. I don't think it's coming, I don't think that's the case at all. I think it's being proactive and inner, working together to face an issue. If it saves us money, let's do it. If it doesn't, let's don't do it. One question I have is when you talk to Garza County, did the county judge, the sheriff or the police, did they say it's worked out for us, it's saving us money? I mean, that's a, I would think that was, that'd be the first thing I would ask them. I mean, how you.
Yes, I did. Um, well, I, I talked, I believe, um, county judge, talked to the county judge, you know? And I talked to the city, uh, city manager, um, and so when it's concerned on, on the city side, um, that.
I will be right back in. No, go ahead.
Um, there was concern on the city side, um, about the lack of, um, or, uh, control, um, you know, not having, um, you know, because you have a, a sheriff that is um, accountable to the voters, but not accountable to the city council or the city manager. And so there was a lack of control about if they've got complaints, were they getting enough coverage? So, I mean, that, you know, on the flip side, what I will tell you is I think that you can write those details into an interlocal. Um, it's going to take, you know, some thought. Um, I think you can write that in, but that was the feedback I got from the city manager. I don't know, I don't know what, um, the county judges, I know we did talk to the county judge, but.
Well, I'm just looking at it from a vision going forward. And if you go back eight years, our vision is we've been lacking in the police department for the last eight years. So where's the vision? This is an opportunity for citizens to self-discuss. I mean, we're lacking in that, in that area, and it has been for eight years. It must come out tonight. I think that's lacking for eight years.
Uh, one thing I do want to interject and, and I should have made this point earlier. Um, so with an interlocal, um, there is a limit to what, um, the county sheriff can, um, enforce. So, um, I would say, and this could be a cost factor, um, I'm, well, I'm going to be requesting it in the budget anyway, preview. Um, spoiler alert, um, as a code enforcement officer, um, so the sheriff would not be able to enforce code. Right? Our ordinance, the city ordinances. So, um, we definitely, I mean, I'm going to be asking for one anyway. Um, but I think we need a code enforcement officer. And so, um.
We don't have one now?
Pardon?
We don't have one yet?
Well, we do, but unfortunately, you know, we have somebody that acts as the fire chief as code enforcement officer and then it's the building inspector. So that's a lot of Susie's under one person.
Limited time.
He does a great job. You know, he's only got, there's only one office.
I'd like to ask one question. Have y'all given any thought at all how much revenue you would generate if you just followed the ordinances? The speed limit, loud mufflers and all that. If you started catching these people and finding them, then take all of that money and turn it into the police department salaries, you could increase their salary. And they'd work at it if they knew it was going to increase their salary.
I mean, I live, I live right down the street from you and I hear those mufflers too. But my wife has a fan that sounds like a jet engine. So just get a, I guess just get a big fan. But I, I understand what you're saying. Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm glad you're back in because you, you made a comment about safety of our officers, which I agree with a hundred percent. But have we looked, I mean, you can look at recently because we've been so understaffed for so long. We don't need to keep kicking that dead horse. But when we got one officer working at night, how safe is that for him? And if those guys, if the sheriff's called out to the lake, how quick can they get back over here to row that road street? So we, the answer is really staff up. I mean, that's the answer to all of this. It's really staff up with every way we go is, is getting them. But we, we need to look at that. You're right. Safety's right. I mean, there's officers out there right now having to do stuff by themselves that they should have backup on, period. Whatever it is. Just stay.
Can, can I say something?
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to that. I, I had typed out something. You're, I said someday it could be bad and it was almost Sunday, not Sunday.
Yeah.
It's Sunday. S O save their bacon on Sunday. And then just another thing to say is on, on the pros, I would just want to just say if those are the three pros that we had, uh, working on the street, uh, reduction in crime and insisted in for, uh, police policing. Uh, that affects ninety-eight hundred people. The cons affect a small amount of people. I would just like you to consider that. I'm with Will. I'm not saying there's a right or wrong, but if those are the three pros, those, everyone would vote for those.
I would also say that those three pros can be achieved with a, a successful chief of police.
Yeah.
Um, we keep. Oh, no, I know. We, we need comparing ourselves to Garza County. And why do we do that? Because they're the only other county with a single municipality that does this. There are several municipalities that have this, but they're the, the Gormans and the rising stars of the world, right? But the, the only comparison that we can look at with a county with a single municipality is Garza County, which has eighty-two percent of their population living within the city limits most. We have, we have about fif, I, I looked at the A, fifty-seven percent living inside city limits. And so that means they have to deal with eighteen percent of their population outside of the city. They have to deal with forty. I can't do math. Forty-three percent, thank you. I was a social. That's why I went to the census website. The, they, we have forty-three percent of our population. So I, I fear that if we keep comparing ourselves to, to post that we're, that we're not thinking apples to apples. I think it's apples to maybe not oranges, but a different, maybe apples to pears. You know what I mean? It's, um, I, I, I think that like you said, safe, you know, safety, yes. Leadership, yes. If we have a PD situation, we do need someone who's going to help bring the staffing up, bring the, the level of service up. Um, because those are all good things. I mean, I, I think that we could get that accomplished with the right chief. Um, and Rob alluded to the fact that Cynthia is wanting to involve, it's not just like the one person hiring committee, involving someone like Sheriff Roach on the hiring committee so that we, we can even in the hiring process, go out and start building those relationships and start building that, that vision for this is what we want our police force to look like. This is what we want whenever, whatever we have, um, situations like on Sunday, we know they're being handled professionally. We know they're being handled appropriately by the book. And, um, we know that the paperwork is going to be good when it comes in and it's not causing us to mess up an investigation or something, you know? I, and, and so from, for me, I, I just feel like that's the goal, not necessarily consolidation versus police chief. It's just how do we improve the service that we are giving across the board?
All I can say is that more than once years ago, uh, there were a lot of years through here, I worked this county by myself and that was it, just me, one, one trooper. And, uh, I don't, not even going to mention any names, but there were times when I would ask for backup from the sheriff's department. And some of them did not show up. The ones that did, they would say, don't say anything. Just, we're here to help you, but don't say anything to anybody. Because the, the sheriff was just, my men got other things to do. I guess that's the easiest way to put it. You know, I don't know how, how else to put it. And like I said, this, this is, this has been way back there and, uh, uh, you just, uh, I, I can't get the safety out of my head, but call, I've been there too many times. I'm, like I said, I'm seventy-five, I'm carrying scars from years and years ago. I'm laying on merchandising table in Big Spring, Texas. That's where I started place work. And they called my wife to come out, you know, to be with me. And, uh, and, uh, uh, I've, I've been beaten up pretty bad. And, uh, but I still had a sense of humor. I guess I did. They let her come in and, uh, she says, are you okay? And I said, man, I'm hurt so bad, even my hair hurts from the top of my head. You know, so she figured that was good. But, but again, that's just, you know, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah, you know, go ahead. Uh, one other thing, Kevin, you were also right, Kevin King, sorry, there's too many Kevs in this room right now. Uh, you were right about something else. I, I, this is how a city commission meeting should look. Whenever we're discussing things, we should have a full house. It shouldn't just be a group of people sitting and chatting. So, um, even though we may not agree on everything, I'm, I'm glad that you, that you've pushed us to have a, a a deeper discussion about stuff because I feel like it, it needed to hap, it needed to happen and, and, um, you know, it, this, I don't know, it's just I'm, I'm happy to have this many people and, and to be able to have these conversations with as many people as I've had.
And I will say, I bet you can ask Kevin Roach and the policemen, they deal with three percent of this population. They don't deal with the ninety-seven percent. On the whole, maybe making comparisons about there's so many in this town. They deal with about three to five percent of the bad guys. Rest of us try to, might go seventy-five on longer streak. There's a patient, he might talk to me, he gets McDonald's, but. I would, I'll just say thank you for having the public forum. I think it was, it's something that's been hashed around privately for years. But it's, you know, I, I'd still like to see if it's going to save us X, you know, in the bottom line, but that, that would be very hard to do. But I'm kind of with Steve. Those three pros are really encouraging, you know, retirement, visiting, investing. Gosh, call the city people and the county people, say, hey, can we work together? Yep, we'll raise money privately to help those guys so they don't lose money, you know? You'd be amazed at what can happen.
Kevin, I'm, I'm like you, I, I would have never thought we would have got this far as a city and county, looking back at what I experienced and I saw years past. So I'm glad everybody's here. Not really. Yes, sir.
There's one thing, as you look at both sides of it, I mean, it sounds more like.
I understand that right here, but thank, thank you.
As you look at both sides of it, either option, I think the one thing that we want to look at changing is the culture. What's going to benefit the culture the most? You know, we can't have a culture that changes ten, fifteen years down the road because that does nothing for the now. We need to establish a culture now. The tour carries on for ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, but it has to be the right culture. Money, money goes so far. Changing salaries, you might be happy for a couple of weeks, couple of months, but if the culture's wrong, it's not going to fix anything. So you have to take the hits now and change the culture. And then you can move forward and it'll start actually changing stuff down the river. But culture is important. That's why people stay at companies and it's why they do.
Yes, ma'am.
It hasn't worked for so many years now. Why not try it? And then put it in the, put it in that we're going to do it for five years and if it doesn't work, then go back.
Thank you.
I think, I think the pros, I'm glad you said what you said. Uh, I think the pros do outweigh the cons. I think the cons can be fixed by having a chief and a full staff, no doubt. But, uh, it was my first question to Kevin and it's what Will said and then what you kind of touched on. I think, you know, cohesion and morale goes a long way. Uh, and everyone working for the same team. I know they are currently all for the good of us. But, uh, you know, when, when you're wearing the same jersey and same uniform, I think that kind of might mean a little more. Uh, that's kind of my favorite pro because the other pros, like you said, can be fixed with what Ben said and you said, full staff, a consistent chief force and a consistent city manager. Uh, that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
I just had a.
Come up here, we'll all hear you.
Sorry, I just had a.
Ma'am, come up here, we'll all hear you. Thank you.
Can I just stand right here?
Appreciate it.
I just, uh, had a question about the, um, you know, we're all talking about how the pros sound really nice. Uh, but on the cons list, the employee morale, I feel like if that goes down, you're going to start losing people. And it's already hard enough to get staffed, you know, on either side of it. Um, so that doesn't really fix the plan of having a fully staffed team on both sides. Um, because if the employee morale goes down, of course, people are going to leave, retire, you know, so on and so forth. And what good does that do for the communities? Because at that point, they're the ones suffering. And again, out at the lake, you know, we have so many people who live out in the county. Um, and just with having, you know, if we're having two, um, outside, two inside, you know, then you're going to have to uh, wait. If something goes on outside, you know, do you want the people to stay inside patrolling? Do you want them to go help? Uh, again, it goes on the safety as well. Um, if you have them leave, you're leaving the inside unprotected. Uh, nobody there to help the citizens within the county. Um, vice versa, you have. Um, vice versa, you have them come out to in, um, again, who's helping the people on the outside? Uh, the lake is a big portion of it. Uh, you're going to have a lot of, you know, we've had a lot of accidents out there. Like I said, who's going to be protecting inside when outside's being helped? Uh, so if you kind of combine them, it's going to be, uh, someone's going to suffer in the end. And so I'm just wondering how that helps the community as a whole. That was.
Thank you, ma'am. I understand what you're saying. Mission, anything else?
Kevin, I'm getting both of these old, man and Stephen.
I think with, everybody's pretty much had their say or should have.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Kevin.
And I'm going to follow him out.
Thank you, Tony.
We see, sir.
All right, we have, uh, got two options on this. If y'all want to look at those in a moment, or if y'all already have, we'll, uh, go with a motion on it then, if you're ready.
I move to continue city law enforcement services and authorize the city manager to proceed with hiring the police chief.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? None opposed? Thank you.
You need to do, you need to do a several hands.
Yeah, you need to, I need to show a hand. So, raise your hand if you're I. Your four, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Six forty-one P M. We are adjourned. Thank all of you very much.